Good afternoon and welcome to the thirty first meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Some housekeeping items, please silence all of your cell phones and your electronic devices. It interferes with the commission reporter. If you're appearing today, please introduce yourself, your client, and spell your names for the commission reporter. If you're here to testify on any issue, please come forward. I'll be sworn in by Ms. Rai. Introduce yourself and spell your names again. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for your consideration.
Yes, sure. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the twenty ninth meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive session minutes of the twenty ninth meeting are approved. Let's move into the public hearing. Agenda item number one, transfer application number one nine dash one five six four three from LG Corp. Mr. Luke.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. To my right is the applicant, Lee Roy Cool, G U O. He is present with counsel Wayne Look. We have no changes to the investigator's report. They have been, Mr. Cool has been operating under temporary license and no problem today.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the February seventh preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve transfer application number one nine dash one five six four three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number one nine dash one five six four three is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck. Calling agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one five two one eight from Broken Boundary Brewery LLC. Gentlemen?
Thank you Commissioners. My name is William Sumrow, W I L L I A M S U M R O W. I'm a co-founder of Broken Boundary Brewery. This is my partner here, I'll let him introduce himself.
Also co-founder, my name is Christopher Cook, C H I S T O P H E R C O K.
Thank you. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
I have just one question. The, are there separate entrances to the different spaces? I know ones are the homebrew space and the space that's under this license.
Yes, sir, there is. There is a single door entrance on the front or street facing section that goes into the tasting area in the brewery.
Okay.
And then there is one in the parking lot area and that is specifically for the homebrew store.
Okay, and your proposed separation is a forty-two inch height.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five two one eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one five two one eight is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one five five eight one from Divine Tasting Room LLC.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Kira Kawakami.
Please, please have a seat. Please have a seat.
Okay, I'll stand.
I'm sorry. Can't see that far.
My name is Kira Kawakami, last name K A W A K A M I. On my right are my clients on behalf of Divine Wine Tasting.
I'm Maureen Nelson Willett, last name is N E L S O N W I L L E T T.
And hello, I'm Jerianne Bennett, last name Bennett, B E N N E T T.
And let me guess, is that Mr. David Bennett sitting in the back?
Yes.
Very good, sir. Let the ladies take care of business. Okay, very good. Ms. Rai.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five five eight one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one five five eight one is approved. Best of luck to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming all the way across the mountain.
I'm gonna stay here.
You're gonna spend the night here? Okay, very good. That's all we need from you.
We've got one, no, we're on to the next item.
Oh, you have one more? Oh, agenda item number four. I'm sorry, you're gonna make it and sell it, huh? Okay, um, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one five five eight two from Divine Tasting Room LLC. Please introduce yourself again for the record.
Kira Kawakami, again for Divine Wine Tasting. On my right?
Maureen Nelson Willett. Jerianne Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Very good. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five five eight two.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, uh, four, application number one nine dash one five five eight two is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Let's move into special license application. Agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one six zero two nine from Honolulu Biannual Foundation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Lorian Ness, last name Ness, N U S S, and I'm the Events and Public Programs Manager for Honolulu Biennial.
Uh, Rick Schneider for Events International.
And I'm Catherine Tudor, co-founder and executive director of Honolulu Biennial Foundation.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, you have a letter in your blue folder. And that being said, if you have any questions for the applicant.
So we're just counseling for this specific application for the fourteenth and fifteenth.
Correct. Yes, so we need to take action.
Um, the commission has not taken action on this application. My understanding is that they wish to withdraw those two dates, so your approval would just, should specify which date you are approving.
Okay.
We would be considering March eighth, two thousand nineteen, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Schneider, um, has anything changed since you last presented your plan to the commission in terms of the March eighth?
Uh, materially now, however, we moved the entryway into the interior of the mall so that it would take, take the whole issue of the sidewalk being climbed, bombed up away. So now we've got that in there. We've also taken out the area that is sort of sensitive in the availability, so that's not being licensed.
We saw that.
And also the bar on that side has been removed. So it all has become a little bit more controlled and, and, uh, with its, with its.
Okay, thanks for the update. Commissioners, do you have any other questions? I, I just have to, uh, so, sorry, yes. Are you planning on hosting students to that event?
No.
No, not at all, right?
No.
Okay, uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six zero two nine for the date of March eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one six zero two nine is approved for Friday, March eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Correct? Thank you. Let's call agenda item number. Number six, application number one nine dash one six zero six one from Honolulu Biannual Foundation. Commissioners?
Motion. Motion to withdraw application number one nine dash one six zero six one? Or is it to approve the withdrawal?
Uh, just to withdraw.
Withdraw.
To withdraw.
Motion to approve, I mean, motion to withdraw, application number one nine dash one six zero six one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one six zero six one is approved to withdraw. Let's go to the last one, agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one six zero six two from Honolulu Biannual Foundation. Commissioners?
Motion to withdraw application number one nine dash one six zero six two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one six zero six two is approved to withdraw.
There's one more. There's one more. Yeah.
Calling agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one six zero six three from Honolulu Biannual Foundation.
Motion to withdraw application number one nine dash one six zero six three.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one six zero six two is withdrawn. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yep, thank you. Good luck on your event.
Yes, please come next Friday if you're free. Aloha.
I don't think so. Once I get on the Windward side, I don't come back till Monday morning. Uh, let's go, go to agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six zero seven five from Forward Oahu New.
Aloha, June Nahele, representing Board Oahu New. Last name Nahele, N A E O L E.
Very good. Commissioners?
Ms. Nahele, um, I have several questions.
Sure.
So I'm hoping you're prepared to go ahead and answer. I don't see your promoter here in the audience, so. Um, because this is a new venue, you're doing it at the Bishop Museum. Parking, have you guys arranged for additional parking other than at the Bishop Museum?
Bishop Museum, at the school, and, um, he's having, where you can bus people in, not the principal.
He's bussing people in?
Um, well, he has companies that are willing to bring people in. But it's, it's more on a, um, not, where they're being, at a certain area, and then they can come in. It's just another service that he's offering, but it's mostly the, the venue parking and then the parking across the street.
So you guys have secured a permit for the school across the street as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, I noticed that the landlord allowed liquor service only from five to nine thirty, so that's correct, right?
Correct, yeah.
And also, um, so, the, um, your application didn't go into detail on, I know it's a two-day event and you guys are only selling two-day event passes. On your wristbands or how, how, is it different colors for each day?
Different for each day.
Different for each day. And also, when you purchase these two-day passes, they don't verify your birthday over the internet when you're doing the sales. How are you guys verifying birthdays above twenty-one?
Um, they're checking IDs at the door and into the twenty-one and older area.
Very good. Um, I noticed also on your floor plan, where are your restrooms for your VIP customers?
They have, um, in the, one at the building area, there is restrooms in that area for the VIPs and for the twenty-one years and older. There is by the, um, closer to the building, there's actually stall for the twenty-one and older in this area, um, you can see.
Where the canatarium is?
Um, no, closer to the entrance.
Okay, so twenty-one and over is gonna be using those restrooms and everybody outside will be using the porta potties that are located in the food and vendor village?
There are porta potties out here and then also a set right here and a VIP area for the VIPs.
So you have porta potties inside the twenty-one and over as well?
Yeah.
Okay, how much porta potties you have inside that?
Um.
It's not indicated on your floor map.
Seven and then two in the VIP area.
Two in the VIP area. Okay, I also noticed that, um, your food vendors is outside of the VIP area. So VIPs are gonna be purchasing their food and then taking it back into the VIP area?
Yes.
Okay, and then what are they doing? They're leaving their drinks within the twenty-one and over area?
Yes, no drinks are not outside that area.
Okay, so you guys are collecting it there, there's gonna be trash?
Yes.
To dump it there or someone's holding it or what are they doing?
No, he's dumping trash cans.
And I noticed also that we have a different set of liquor that you guys are providing, which is the Malibu and Jameson.
Yes.
Um, in his previous events, he's done cans only chilled. How are you guys doing at these mixtapes?
Those are actually going to be cups at ten ounces.
Mix.
Yeah.
Mix.
Mix.
And they're gonna be, all of that is gonna be provided in the one bar in the VIP area. You guys are gonna be mixing and doing beer.
The VIP and then there's another general bar right next to that.
Okay. Okay, so both of them are gonna be end up, the cups are ten ounce?
Yeah.
Ten ounce plastic cup.
Plastic cup.
Okay, thank you for your clarification.
Only have one, maybe one or two questions. Um, looking at the floor plan with the area delineated in red, is the entire licensed premises that's being proposed for twenty-one and older?
Yes.
And so no one under twenty-one is gonna be on the edges of the red areas?
No, yeah.
And then how do you secure that?
We have ten police officers and thirty-six security guards.
Okay, is there any physical barriers that prevents someone under age from entering?
Yes, actually, it's all very, gonna be very, barriers.
What type of barriers?
Um, the metal, what is those called?
Cattle cage.
Cattle cage.
Yes, that's what it's called.
Those are my two questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Very good.
Just, um, keep in mind to be mindful of this, we have other events that happen here, however, this one is a larger event. The residents there, um, which I happen to, to, to know two of them that live on that street specifically. I tend to hear a lot of, um, parking situations and all that kind of stuff. So try to work with, I know that Bishop Museum does work with the community there and the residents around there. Uh, but just be mindful of that and I don't know what the bus situation is, how you guys are gonna drop off.
I need to remind him on that and see how we can make sure that we don't have any issues in the community. See how we can make sure that you figure that.
Yeah, and then per- preferably work with Uber or some type of Lyft situation for, for normal.
Yes, and we've done that in the past, so we'll do that where we have designated spots for pickup and drop off. All righty. Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
No question, no further question?
No, request of post-event report?
Um, yes, you can, yeah.
All right, uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six zero seven five with the following three conditions. One is that a post-report, a written post-report will be provided to the commission no later than thirty days from the date of the event. Number two is the, um, you guys will provide it in person, yeah, so you guys will appear in person to provide it. Um, part of the post-report will, will be, um, total wristband sold, total liquor sold, and how much attendees, and any incident reports, anything, any outbursts, anything that happens.
Or medical.
Or medical, any type of medical.
Second.
Moved in, moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six zero seven five is approved with the Bermit and Commission, uh, Vice Chair Algonquin's motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you for doing this for the school. It's a good service you provide.
Thank you.
It's, it's fun, it's a lot of work and the kids help clean up and they get all the recyclables, so they make money for the sports teams too.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, let's move on to the preliminary hearings. Agenda item number ten, application one nine dash one five six three nine from G Lion Hawaii LLC. Ms. Cool.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant present to my right is authorized agent Mark Nezoo from N E Z U. We have no changes to the investigator's report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one five six three nine.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one five six three nine is approved. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one five six four zero from G Lion Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant present to my right is authorized agent Mark Nezoo from H E Z U. We have no changes to the investigator's report.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five six four zero.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one five six four zero is approved. Thank you. When did Tower Number Two open?
When? When did it open?
Yeah. When?
October?
October? Oh, okay, great question, great question. Thank you, thank you. Let's move on to, um, agenda item number twelve. This is a request, request number one nine dash one six zero seven nine from Uber EZ LLC.
Good afternoon, my name is Nick Lobendain, L O B E N D A N.
Uh, Jennifer Lobendain, uh, L O B E N D A N.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Gee, you guys here every week, yeah?
I know.
It's okay.
Okay, um, I reviewed your, um, plan and I thought we were doing, what are we doing? I thought we're doing mimosas, like in the morning brunch kind of thing.
Uh, that's for Uber EZ, EZ Q is gonna be a, a play on barbecue.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting that too confused. I was wondering what hap- we doing mimosas with slushies now, again? Um. I reviewed what you guys proposed and it's, um, really detailed and really good, um, but I had one question. So this, this concern comes up time and time again when it comes with these slushy machines is you're proposing that, um, the slushy batch that hasn't been used will be drained and you, you'll clean out the machine every?
Haven't spent so long, right, yeah.
Yeah, but you guys will refrigerate the unused batch?
Mm-hmm.
And it will be discarded, um?
The following day.
The following day, so. But when you guys are reusing the batch, I'm assuming you guys are not mixing a new batch, right?
No, yeah.
Okay, so you guys will use the old, run it out, and then use the new, right?
Exactly. Yes.
Just asking clarifying, 'cause I don't know if you're gonna pour somewhere in there and always made the day after, you know what I'm saying?
No. Right, that doesn't make any sense.
Okay. So you're really clear that, yeah, within, um, it will not exceed twelve hours in a machine, which is good and the machine will be cleaned and drained every night, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
So you folks are open seven AM to about one or one thirty?
Right now for Uber Easy.
Our breakfast space, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, but we're opening a new restaurant called EZ Q.
Okay.
And that's what this is for.
I see, okay.
And it's gonna be open from like three thirty to nine, nine thirty.
Okay, yeah, I had a disconnect in terms of slushy for breakfast today, so, thank you.
But I have, I have seen when we were in New Orleans, they had a, a frozen rosé for breakfast.
Really?
Yeah.
That's my bad, I, I see here the DVA is EZ Q. So it's two separate, I apologize for that mistake. Okay?
Okay, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one six zero seven nine.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, request number one nine dash one six zero seven nine is approved.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six one zero seven from Mia Obsiyala. How's that, Mr. Zeebuckalong?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission, Mia Obsiyala on behalf of the applicant seated to my right is Noah Laporga, L A P O R G A, member of the applicant. Um, I will start off by apologizing, I did omit that critical information. I hope you have since gotten it, the address, it was formally, um, grounded. The license was not renewed after June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one six one oh seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six one zero seven is approved.
Thank you.
Commissioners, can I have a type of action on agenda items number fourteen through seventeen inclusive?
Motion to approve adoption of decision in order for agenda items fourteen through seventeen.
Second.
Been moved in seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision in order, agenda items number fourteen through seventeen inclusive are approved. Moving to the communications.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Ms. Rai, your newly deputy corporation counsel here for the liquor commission prosecution, which needs adjudication.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eighteen, Aloha Lounge.
Aloha, my name's Jihyei, J I H Y E Y I, uh, from, uh, Tiki Corporation, DVA, Aloha Lounge.
Thank you.
Uh, the charges honor dur- honor during the fiscal year ending July thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of rule three eighty-one seventeen point five six of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ma'am, how do you risk, how do you wish to plead?
Uh, I hire many jurors.
You can, you can say either admit the plea, deny the plea, or no contest.
Korea, I don't understand a hundred percent, so. I should have to say.
Let me have a point of way. Do you need an interpreter?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, so, uh, we will continue this matter for, uh, for?
For three.
Next available or how long, Ms. Rai?
I would say next available.
You can explain to me, I understand about sixty percent.
Uh, no ma'am, uh.
We need you to say one hundred percent, yeah.
I'm so sorry.
No, 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 that's fine, it's not an issue, you're entitled to that, we'll gladly furnish one, well, free of charge.
We can say next available.
Next available?
Of course, yeah.
So I'm done?
Well, it means we have to reschedule when we can get an interpreter.
Oh, I have to come back again?
Yep.
We want to make sure that you fully understand
Thank you.
the violation that you have been charged with.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, okay.
So I'm down, I'm down, I go home?
Yes, okay, so for today.
Wait now, just hold on a minute, let us do our legal thing here.
Okay, motion to continue agenda item eighteen to next available?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eighteen is continued to the next available.
I'm so sorry.
And she will, she will help you with that availability, okay?
Thank you. Sorry.
No, 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 no problem. Okay, thank you.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Yeah, uh, calling agenda item number nineteen, Mukai Holly.
George D. Wright, E T R A I.
George D. Wright, E T I R E I.
Um for this charge, I would like to uh request to amend it, um. Amend the uh violation to reflect that uh licensee actually did. Renew their license but hadn't posted the new license at the time of inspection, so it was a failure post.
Yeah, failure to post it.
Excuse me?
He had a failure to.
Post the.
Post it in the prosecutor's man.
Okay.
Hello.
Oh, yes.
Um so, I can speak in your language.
Okay.
You're gonna need to enter your appearance.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm an attorney from enforcement, um supervising investigator.
Thank you.
So um. Our position on this, the way it's charged is that it's correct because they hadn't, it hadn't, the license hadn't been issued yet since it hadn't been picked up.
Okay, then I I withdraw my motion to amend.
Okay. Okay, so the the original charge violation of three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point fifty-six stands?
Yes.
Okay, very.
Three eighty-two, thirty-one.
Four substantial.
Four substantial.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm reading Aloha Lounge. Uh you got me twice, okay, yes.
Let's continue, go ahead and read the charges please.
Okay, honor about July first twenty eighteen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensees sold liquor on the premises which is prohibited upon the expiration of the license and until that license is renewed and issued by the commission. Which constituted a violation of rule three eighty-two thirty-one point four C of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Rai, how do you wish to plead? Motion to accept the no contest plea?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number nineteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Mister Rai, you have any explanation?
No.
Please. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty, Kalua Lodge number two two three zero. Please call Kalua.
Oh, um licensee did contact me and requested an extension, a continuance until March seventh twenty nineteen, I have no objection. Pardon me?
Just continue today.
Yes.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty to March seventh two thousand nineteen?
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty is continued to March seventh two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, Isa Kalia Matsuri. Isa Kaya Matsuri.
Hi, I'm a janitor manager there, um my name is Julie Oshioka, why? Oh, is it right, okay.
The charges honor about January eighteenth twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee made physical alterations within its licensed premises to wit removal of wall. Wall tables, installation of ceiling light compartments, relocation of washbasins. And installation of new movable freezer without the prior written approval of the Liquor Commission. In violation of rule three eighty-three sixty-two A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Oshioka, how do you wish to plead? Can I hear you?
No comment.
No contest? Thank you. Uh motion to accept the no contest plea?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh this is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Ms. Oshioka, you have any explanation or comment?
I wasn't there, but I accepted for the minute. Actually, I wasn't there, but say.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Hosh Bar and Grill, Mr. Keirchi.
Asked in Mister Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith, you took the voices.
Do I reading the church?
One second, um Chair, due to a conflict of interest, I will recuse myself from this matter. Very good.
It will be uh wait for you to the charge and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest of the agenda item number twenty-two?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh this is the first violation for adjudication purposes, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
So this gonna be a long-winded explanation. Yes, um first of all, the the licensee surrendered the license on June thirty, so it's no longer in there. But this was done under Mister Kashani Services Agreement, when he moved in, he had a bunch of violations. That were issued for the previous tenant and the violations were issued by D P P for unauthorized work. The unauthorized work was that at some point within the last six or seven years, the bathrooms got switched. Some point in the last six or seven years, they added a sushi bar, they added an electrical box. And did all additional wiring without any permits. So there was a pending violation when Mister Kashani moved in, he knew about it. And then he moved to remedy that, but the problem, and we had submitted a uh request to approve alterations, which is ultimately approved. But he jumped the gun, and the reason he jumped the gun was because the building inspector told him, if you don't get it done. I'm gonna issue you a daily fine. That's why he did it, because the work that was done was reversing the bathrooms. The only thing on here that was not. Was not an issue was he put in the beer cooler and he put in the new office. Everything else was reversing out what was there before there was not.
So the lesser of two evils.
Yes, unfortunately, but he did know about it when he moved in, but he didn't wanna wait because he had a building inspector telling him. Do it or else.
So he did put in a new office.
Yes, he did, that's why he put, he put a new office and said the beer cooler certainly he put in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me just ask, Commissioner Lee, uh so what is a daily fine for the building department violation? I'm not sure, I asked, you can ask the revise ordinance as a part of it.
Chapter eighty.
I think he's getting way cheap, huh?
I would not disagree Mister Chair. I mean, if, you know, the it, the fine is what it is, but I I wanna go on the explanation is I didn't want the commissioner to think that Mister Kashani just ignored. You know, the commission rules that he was under some pressure because he's a licensee now, and that's why the long-winded explanation.
Yeah, thank you. So did they still go through a realtor? Originally?
No, it didn't, because what happened is that the previous tenant moved out.
Uh-huh.
And the landlord was my client, and when, so I made sure that when Mister Kashani moved in. That he knew about it and it's like it gotta be corrected, so it was not a, a I don't know about situation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty-two?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two, recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to agenda item number twenty-three. Yes, thank you. Um calling agenda item number twenty-three, Queen Capilani Hotel, Mister Lee.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, Terry Lee on behalf of the licensee, wait reading of the charges and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-three, the no contest plea is accepted.
And this is, this is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Ms. Lee, any explanation or comment?
Yes, unlike Mister Keir, I have a shortness.
I don't know what that was.
It was my fault, I I should have advised the client, seek approval before I did the renovations, if it's some unknown reason, I just overlooked it.
Okay, thank you, uh motion to accept the recommended fine, uh approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-three?
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-three, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars are, is approved. So are we done with everything now?
Yes.
The renovations are all finished and you're, you have everything working, open?
Yep.
Oh, good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-four, Little Soul Two LLC, Mister.
Yes, to my right is Jenny Mahr, M A H R.
R.
R H, excuse me, I mean R. She's a general manager, she is further counsel Wayne Luke, uh wait reading of the charges and to plead of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-four?
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-four, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh this is a third violation, um and as such, I recommend. A fine of a thousand dollars plus ten dollars for the fifteen minutes beyond the closing time, which would come out to one thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
What was the last, the figure?
Uh one thousand one hundred fifty.
Seven one five zero.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mister Luke, any explanation or comment?
I would, you know, the last violation prior to this was twenty fifteen and you know, we've, if, and um, that's what we're.
That's correct.
Yeah, so you know, I questioned, we've been trying since then, they had a a couple in a row and then, you know, she's been trying very much to. Keep within the law and then, three years later, we finally get, you know, quite uh this violation.
Ms. Lee, do you have available, I know it goes back to two thousand fifteen, but what time the violation occurred?
I don't have that information about how late it was.
Yeah, how many minutes passed?
I don't have that information.
Mister Luke.
Yes, uh let me just.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't you give ten dollars for it?
Per minute?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. She has.
Oh, you mean for this?
Yeah.
No, 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 for the two thousand fifteen violation, we have the time of the incident or.
This time.
Oh, no, we don't have.
I know, you know, two thousand fifteen is four years ago, but, or three years ago since the time of this violation, but.
Sure.
What what if anything is your client doing to try to make sure this doesn't happen going forward?
She's been trying, you know, this special night, they have the, there's some world, the World Cup was on and. The the time where they're watching, uh is that correct?
But there's gotta be some system or procedure in place to ensure that their customers or guests or clients are no longer consuming or in possession of alcohol. Have you done anything to try to create these processes or systems?
Well, it will last call at one thirty, I will clear everything by one forty-five.
So have you ever considered, because it is a sporting event, shut the TV off at one thirty?
No.
But that's, to me, that that's really an unacceptable excuse.
There's no excuse, actually.
It's an unacceptable excuse because your customers are watching the, did you say the World Cup?
Yeah.
Right, so there's probably a lot of Aussies and New Zealanders in there and.
Don't bring that. I forgot which team.
So, I mean. Your license is a va- valuable thing for your livelihood.
Excuse me Mister Chair. I could just um uh provide some information here with respect to the twenty fifteen violation, although we don't have the exact number of minutes.
Thank you.
Beyond two, uh I do note that the history of violations reflect a a fine imposed of two thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Because it was a multiple vi- violation.
Motion to to be to executive session?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, we are now in the executive session.
Oh, go ahead.
This is no more.
Okay, we are now, um. Okay, we are now back from uh executive session and on the official records.
Our motion's gonna be to impose a fine of two thousand dollars for agenda item twenty-four?
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-four, a fine of two thousand dollars would be imposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-five, TJ's Sports Bar and Grill.
Um Travis McKay representing TJ Sports Bar, last name MCKAY.
Um okay, there are two charges, the first charge is. Honor about May eighteenth twenty eighteen at two oh eight AM. In the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have the street and or primary entrances to the license premises unlocked during the time customers were on the premises. In violation of rule three eighty-four seventy-two point two of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Can you read charge two please?
Charge two, honor about May eighteenth twenty eighteen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee allowed the obstruction, hampering or interfering with investigations. Or Liquor Commission operations in any way, including but not limited to the sounding of alarms, flashing of lights or use of the public address system or other. Advance wanting announcing the arrival of commission investigators in violation of rule three eighty-four seventy-nine point one of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mister McKay, how do you wish to plead the charge one?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge number one?
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five, the no contest plea for charge number one is accepted.
Mister McKay, how do you wish to plead for charge number two?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge number two for agenda item twenty-five?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five, the charge number two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Lee, what are your recommendations for charge one?
Uh for charge one, it's a first violation, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
What is your recommendation for charge number two?
Uh it's also a first violation, I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars, um according to the report, what happened here was uh. Um the manager on duty turned, when the liquor commissioners identified themselves, the manager on duty um said it's the liquor commission. And the bartender began taking beverages from the patrons.
Mister McKay, do you have any explanation for charge number one, and this is the charge where the violation is that.
Of the door.
Or was served, or, sorry. The premises were unlocked at two oh eight AM?
So um. I'm working off island right now, so I'm, I'm not able to be there on certain, I try to be there closing or at least my wife or. Try to have one of our door guys there just because of safety, um so that's the reason why we kept it locked and then also. It kinda ties into the next part of it and so they can't keep, because where our bar is located, it's kind of more towards the back of the. Our location, I guess you could say, so they can't, they couldn't hear the person at the other side where the door is. And uh what the manager told me is that when they she seen them, they were knocking on the window in front of the bar. That's when she said liquor commission, so then somebody went to go open the door, but like I said, we weren't there that night, but that's as far as the. Explanation that I can give, but as far as locking the door, it was more for s- security, safety. Because it's usually just the girls, sometimes even our kitchen guys will leave a little before them, they they're done, so they'll leave early, so. That's the main reason, but and we understand that we're not supposed to keep it locked, but that's why they did it.
Okay, and and my opinion, the more serious charge Mister McKay is the second one, because. You have an obligation to cooperate with the Liquor Commission, so you heard the prosecutor's comments that.
Yeah.
In response to someone saying it's the Liquor Commission, bartenders were removing alcohol, did you hear that?
Yeah, so our our manager is. Yeah, so our, our manager is actually the bartender, and from the explanation that I was giving, and, and my fiance was giving, was that. They were, that, they were in the process of cleaning up everything already, already at that time, so, maybe it sounded like they were saying liquor commission, um, but that's what they were doing, they were. Because what they do at the end of the night, all it goes, they bring all this stuff onto our bar, and we only have one well, so, at, at that sink is where they start dumping and washing, and then they put the bottles away and everything like that, so. I understand that, um, it could have been taken as if that's what they were doing, but also, that was expla- explanation that the girls are giving me. So, you know, I, the most that we could, we can do is what we did, is kinda like retrain or actually talk to them about it and explain the consequences, you know, of us having to be here. Um, but we do, we will take it a, a lot more serious, and I'll really push them harder on, on that part of it, and especially, uh, trying to get the stuff in earlier, so.
I know you're hearing this secondhand information you were presenting to us, and I, I do find you sincere in trying to correct the problem, so I, I would encourage you to train, retrain, and make sure that if and when liquor commission. Investigators come on your property or knock on the door or window, you fully cooperate and have all of your staff fully cooperate then.
You know, I, I, I get that part of it, and it's, um, it's kinda hard at times, because I ca- I totally understand how liquor commission would, the investigator would think. That that's exactly what they're doing, and I also get the other side, so, you know, we are definitely, um, gonna be doing more training or retraining.
And I am concerned if this occurs again, um, the consequences could be much more drastic.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, um, motion, just feel like.
Yes.
Would you like to make any further comments?
Um.
On the representation that the licensee made?
Uh, no, no further comments, it was just, um, the investigators noted that it was a few minutes before the door was unlocked to let them in.
The motion is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one, and the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for charge number two, for agenda item twenty-five?
Second.
They moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five, charge number one, recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved, agenda item number twenty-five. Charge number two, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved, for a total of one thousand five hundred dollars. Let's move on to. Agenda item number twenty-six. Mr. Rai, do you have any comments?
Just waiting for first crossover, cannot come soon enough.
Will that be this Friday?
Uh, next Thursday.
Oh, next Thursday, what is Friday? The legislation, nothing, this Friday, or, or tomorrow?
First decade.
First decade, oh, okay, very good, um, does, do you have any administrative matters?
No, I believe you got the two thirty apart. No question?
No question, thank you, Mr. Carl, we'll take that under advisement.